All right, Commissioner Davis, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, I'm here as well.
Trying to figure out where the camera is on this tablet, but I think I found it.
You're definitely all in the frame.
All right, thank you. This system looks and works a whole lot better than our previous system. Whoever put it together and tested it deserves some kudos.
Actually, I think Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood is probably finding that he has a lot more technical skills and knowledge than he thought he possessed going into this job.
So there is a master producer at the board that switches from one commissioner to the other when they speak in the commission room. It looks almost like a professional TV directing job.
I agree. Yeah, I don't know if that's city staff or if that's Salina media connection, but whoever's doing it, at least from the Zoom seat, looks like they're doing a really good job.
Fully agree.
Somebody will sign when we're back and ready to go.
I tell you, with high resolution cameras, you really have to watch what I look like.
Yeah, looking forward to my first post-vaccination haircut in about six months, so.
Really? You just got, you got your vaccination?
No, I'm going to at the end of the week, so.
Good.
Really looking forward to that.
Very good.
All right, Mr. Wood, are you there?
He just stepped away to deal with the technical detail, but he says we're ready.
Okay, so we're good. All right, well, with that, I will go ahead and call the Monday, March 8th, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order and confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Since we're doing a hybrid model today, we have commissioners both and the public and staff both physically in attendance and virtually. I would like to ask the folks that are physically in attendance at the meeting at the City County Building to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will follow that with a moment of silence. Thank you all very much. Thank you guys for relating that. With that, we'll go to City Manager Mike Skreg for a brief COVID update on the data and the trends in Salina over the past week.
Mayor Hodges, did you want to do a roll call also?
You know, one of these meetings, probably about January of 2022, I'm actually going to hit everything in the correct order. I think that's a brilliant idea, Commissioner Hoppick. Let's go ahead and do that roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you, and thank you very much for catching that. Now we'll proceed to Mr. Skreg.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Hodges. I'm going to try to verbally report to you some numbers on the key indicators that we've talked about before. And I would remind you that our data is based on Fridays, week to week, so these numbers are based on March 5th. In terms of new cases, there were 37 new cases going back prior weeks. There was 55 the week prior, 59 the week prior to that, 106 the week prior to that, and then almost 200 for the two weeks prior. So 37 currently compared to that prior kind of downward trend from 200 to 37. In terms of active cases, there's now 313. Going back prior weeks, that compares to 699, 1,179, 1,251, and a peak of about 1,855. In terms of total recovered, there's now 5,553 individuals recovered from COVID, and that's an increase of 424. As of March 5th, there were two hospitalizations reported compared to nine the week prior, nine the week before that, 12, and a peak of about 34 in early January. Total deaths now total 106, and that was the same number last week. So there were no deaths in the intervening weeks' time. Going back week by week for the prior month, it would be zero, two the week prior, two the week before that, and then seven the week before that. So I think that is an indication that the numbers are trending downward. I think I reported last week that Jason Tiller, the Health Director, will be in attendance, virtually or in person, I'm not sure which, next week and be able to provide his perspective and be prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skreg, and that's something I would encourage the members of the governing body as well as members of the public to be thinking about those questions and to please don't hesitate to submit those either to, for the public, the City Commission at salina.org email address, or for the commissioners to submit those to City Manager Skreg so he can pass those on to Mr. Tiller, and he can be prepared with the information that we would like to receive from him. So at any rate, that will be at next, that COVID update from County Health Department Director Jason Tiller will be at next week's meeting. And in the meantime, I would just like to thank everyone for continuing to mask up and to maintaining social distancing and to encourage everyone to please sign up and receive the vaccination when you have the opportunity to do so. Because I think the last few weeks are showing us that all of that, all of that can work together, but we've all got to do our part to mitigate the risk. So thank you very much. We don't have any awards and proclamations today, so that will bring us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. We would ask that you clearly state your name, where you're from, and limit your remarks to five minutes. And with that, I will turn it over to Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood to go over the procedure about how you raise your virtual hand. And of course, we will be glad to hear from anyone who's actually in physical attendance in the City County Building today.
So Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood here. It doesn't actually look like we have any members of the public that are online, but we do have several people in the room. So I won't go through the whole list since we don't have any of the public online, but we can, we can do the folks in the room if somebody wants to step up to the podium and state your name.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Hodges and City Commissioners. My name is Stephen Howe, and I reside at 2202 Melrose Lane. On January 11th of this year, I was sworn in to serve as a State Representative for House, Kansas House District 71, which covers East Salina and Seline County. I currently serve on three committees, federal and state affairs, transportation, and insurance and pensions. The Kansas Legislature is currently at the midpoint of this legislative session, just having completed turnaround week. Because the session is scheduled for 90 days, the legislature has certain deadlines to help keep us on schedule. And so this turnaround week is the last week in which non-exempt bills can be passed out of their house of origin. So last week, the House of Representatives passed 63 different bills, which will now be considered by the Senate or a conference committee. So my main purpose for being here is just to formally introduce myself. I haven't really had the opportunity since being sworn into come and visit with you all. And I want you to know that it is my desire to work with you, city staff, the county government, and the local school districts. Together, we can help make Salina and Seline County a better place to work, operate a business, raise a family, or even retire. As a State Representative, it is important for me to have citizen input, especially as policy is being considered in the legislature. The best way to contact me is by email, which is steven.how@house.k s.gov. My office phone in Topeka is 785-296-7642. I would be glad to provide that contact information to city staff so it can be distributed to the City Commission. But in parting, I just want to say thank you for your service to our community as well. And don't ever assume that I know everything that's going on. I definitely rely on citizen input as I make decisions on different bills before the legislature. So with that, I wish you all a prosperous and healthy rest of your week and in the weeks and months ahead. I think there's a bright future for Salina and Seline County, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Howe. I really appreciate you taking the time to, to visit the City Commission meeting, and I think we're all looking forward to getting to meet you face to face. And thank you for all of your hard work on the citizens of Salina's behalf, and best wishes to you on your new legislative career. And congratulations on your committee appointments. I'm sure you'll be working very hard on our behalf, and we thank you for that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Dalton, the city of Salina. I would like to ask Mayor Hodges that when do you expect that you will lift, you and the commission lift your mask mandate? The State House and the Kansas State House is, doesn't even require you to have a mask on. It's just more of a, they wish you would, but they're not forcing it. And I heard now that we're writing tickets to businesses, it amazes, it's kind of ridiculous to send law enforcement to write tickets when they have other stuff to be doing. Look at our crime rate, and you're going to make, and you're going to force law enforcement to go waste their time on writing tickets for mask mandate violations? I just think that's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. I would agree. It is ridiculous. It's unfortunate that we're having to waste law enforcement officer, man and woman power on writing tickets when it's such an easy thing to comply with our mask coordinates. And I'm sure that we'll be reviewing this in the weeks ahead, the governing body as a whole, in consultation with both city staff and county staff and Salina Regional Health Centers direction. So thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
It doesn't look like there's anybody else. Mayor Hodges.
Thank you very much. We don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll proceed to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 1, 2021. Item 6.2, consider awarding contract for micro-surfacing.
Are there any items that a commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda? And if not, then I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Hodges, I move that we approve consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, items 6.1 and 6.2. Could we have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to administration, item 7.1.
Item 7.1, report on bids received for vehicle and equipment purchases for 2021.
Hi, Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance and Administration. As part of the 2021 budget, City Commission approved 33 vehicles and equipment items under the SubCIP 2021 program. Today, we are bringing forward 25 items for your consideration. Staff has worked with Central Garage to complete specifications and put out bids. And we have brought forward those in several categories. So I'm just going to go over the categories. I'm not going to go over them item by item. In the first group, we're bringing forward a list of items that both came in under budget and that we are, we are recommending that you award to the low bidder. The second group of items are items that came in under budget, but they're, we're not recommending that they go to the lowest bidding bidder for different reasons. Most of those are that they didn't, the lowest bidder did not meet specifications. The third group of items that we're bringing forward are items that are over budget. However, we are still recommending awarding those to the low bidders. I will make a note on this page in this group, the last item for the two convenience area roll-off boxes, the recommended bidder is actually Downing, not Technical International. We caught that typo today when we were reviewing some purchase order information. The next group is a group that we did receive a bid, however, it did not meet specifications, so we're requesting that we rebid that item. And the last group is an item that was, that did not receive any bids, so we are asking for, we're making a recommendation to also rebid that item. In addition to these items that were approved in the 2021 SubCIP, in December of 2020, the police vehicle was wrecked and rendered a total loss. So after negotiations with this insurance company and all of those related costs were paid, we found, we got it to a net amount of $30,603.25 that is available to cover the purchase of a new vehicle. Since that met with the timing of this proposal, we reached out to Long MacArthur, who was the low bidder on the other three vehicles that were scheduled, and they are willing to extend their vehicle price for this purchase. So we are recommending that we award the purchase of a fourth police vehicle to replace this, using the same bid price that Long MacArthur provided. The summary of the fiscal note is that all of these budgets, with the exception of sanitation, came in under budget. Even if we go out for rebid on the two items that we recommended, they still should come in under budget. In the recommended action, I did provide you with a summary list of what we are recommending for each of these items, just to make it a little bit easier to look at. Just as another note to reminder, the second, or the fourth to the last item for the roll-off boxes that recommended bidder is Downing, not Technology International. So basically, a recap is we're asking to award 24 of these items and rebid two items. Staff identifies the following options for City Commission: approve the purchase of the vehicles and equipment as recommended, authorize staff to proceed with the purchases and rebids, and authorize the city manager to sign contracts with the selected vendors. You could approve these purchases with amendments as you see fit. You could postpone consideration of this, this action and provide us with additional information that you might need, or you could choose not to approve the purchase of the vehicles at this time. Staff recommends option number one. And I do have John Dura, our Central Garage Supervisor, with us today if we have questions about any of the specific bids or the bid process. So we would stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pack. Are there any members of the commission who have questions for Ms. Pack?
Commissioner Hoppick, and I don't really have a question about this. I just, this probably goes back to last year. Do we have deferred items from last year because of COVID and not knowing what our budget was? I know we, we put off some purchases. Will we be addressing some of that later in the year or?
We actually recommended to staff that if they had an item on last year that they resubmit it this year. So some of these items were actually items from last year. We wouldn't anticipate addressing those separately, to my knowledge.
Yeah, at least out of this current budget, and one of the things that we're talking about is going back and providing kind of an update of where the sales tax fund stands and whether the item by item, category by category, there's a balance there. So if anything, we might have an opportunity going into the 2022 budget to kind of do our annual appropriation and account for any additional savings that we've deferred expenditures, maybe I should say, that we've realized.
Yeah, I was pleased, Commissioner Hoppick, I guess, since we're still virtual, so we should say who we are, but I was pleased with the, the number of bids that came in under the budgeted amount. That was, that was, that was good. That's all I had.
Anyone else? If, if not, we'll open it up for public comment. And again, I'd remind anyone who would like to comment to please state your name and where you're from.
I don't see any at this time. Mayor Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action. I do have one question for Ms. Pack. Do we need to include in the motion that Downing is the recommended bidder on the roll-off boxes? Or have we acknowledged that sufficiently now so we can just go ahead to approve the purchase without mentioning them specifically?
I would prefer that you mention them specifically. I think that'll make it clear. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hoppick, I move we approve purchase of 2021 vehicles and equipment as recommended, authorizing staff to proceed with purchases and rebids, and authorize the city manager to sign contracts with selected vendors, correcting the blue sheet and making note that the two convenience area roll-off boxes are being purchased from Downing. Commissioner David, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the vehicle and equipment purchases for 2021. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. Thank you. That vote passes 5-0, and that will bring us to item 7.2.
Item 7.2, request for permission to submit application for Safer Grant.
Chief Royce.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I come for you today to request your approval for the Fire Department to submit a grant application with the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA for what's more commonly known as a Safer Grant, which stands for Staffing and Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. This is a federal grant that usually costs shares departments to increase their staffing, and this is the first time they've ever had a no-cost share option. Most of the time, it's 100%, 75%, 25% is how they usually handle this. This grant will cover 100% of all personnel costs and benefits for 36 months or three years. The total cost is $845,800 or $460 would be what the grant would be a request for. The department's seen a steady increase in overtime and callback expenses in the past several years. As you may recall from my presentation, a couple of weeks ago, I showed you a slide that showed what our daily minimum staffing was of 25, and it has been that way since 2005. During that same period of time, in the last 16 years, we've seen a 77% increase in call volume. In 2013, we added a fourth ambulance, which did increase service to the citizens. However, we did it without adding any additional personnel. So we basically had four people on two of the engines, and we took those four people, or those two extra people, and used that crew to staff the fourth ambulance, which is medic four right now. This is a very competitive grant, and if awarded, it will allow us three years to monitor and see how the additional staffing affects our overtime and callback budgets. The intent being the possibility that in that three years, the department would be able to budget for the added personnel with most of the savings from the overtime. Some of the causes for the overtimes, particularly in 2019, were, we had nine service-connected injuries, which is a high amount of injuries. We had 10 last year in 2020. So we are seeing an increase in injuries, and these are fire ground injuries, work comp injuries. We also hired two, or I'm sorry, four new recruits that year. So at one time during 2019, we were actually down on our staffing, which required additional personnel. And we also had three personnel in paramedic class at that time, all in 2019. Fire service and Fire Department is a little bit different than any other department. I think I've said it before that we always work in crews or teams. Some departments can get by without one person a shift or two people a shift, but anytime we get down below that 25-person minimum manning, we're taking apparatus and vehicles off track and declining our service level. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding the grant.
Thank you, Chief Royce. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Davis?
Hi, Chief Royce. Does your budget, you then have three years to plan to increase your budget to absorb the cost of these positions after the three years are up?
Yes, sir. But Mike Skreg here. I just want to be real clear. We've, we've had conversations for quite some time about whether full-time staffing at regular rate would save enough overtime to offset adding that staff, and we've never, we've never attempted that. This represents an opportunity, a pilot project of sorts, to use grant funding to increase staffing levels. The expectation would be that that 25 level that Chief Royce mentioned would still be the staffing level we're trying to maintain, but this would be an opportunity to see whether we realize a net breakeven or possibly savings by avoidance of overtime. At the end of that process, we would then have to size up what we've seen, whether it pays for itself and whether we want to continue.
So it did not pay for itself.
So if it did not pay for itself, do you politely drop those four positions? Or do you just increase?
Yeah, there, there's enough turnover on a, on a regular basis that I think we could get back to that staffing level through attrition rather than any type of layoffs.
All right. Thank you.
Just one thing real quick, because it relates very closely to what Commissioner Davis just asked about. But another item that I hope that you'll take into consideration is the input from the firefighters themselves, whether having the additional staff and being able to reduce their overtime, if that's viewed as, you know, a positive thing. And if, you know, even if it doesn't quite work out on a, on a cost basis, if we're seeing a lot more job satisfaction, fewer injuries, other benefits from being staffed at a higher level, I hope that that's something that, that we can take into consideration as well.
Sure. Yeah, I think as we approach conclusion of the grant cycle, we'd come back, look at costs, look at staffing, and, and we'd make a strategic decision at that point. But I, I don't want to create the expectation that the, the presumption is that this is an eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar expense we're just going to budget into in full between now and then. It's, we'd have to look at the financial performance as well as the, the, you know, intangibles.
Roger. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the governing body?
Yeah, Commissioner France here. I do have several. When we do this, is this going to have a change, affect the EMS overtime as well as the fire overtime? In other words, we have a certain amount of overtime and fire suppression that's related to firefighting or firefighters. There's also, and that's the, the big number. But in the EMS division, there's also a lot of callbacks. And, you know, that's where eighty percent of our calls are.
About eighty-seven percent.
Yeah.
Right.
So is this going to reduce EMS overtime also?
That would be my hope. However, you, this is a fire, fire-only grant. You cannot use this for EMS personnel.
Okay.
The way, if you, the grant language says that it's for staffing of apparatus, that more than fifty or fifty-one percent of the time, that would be their primary. So it would, it would help.
Okay. What kind of metrics does FEMA require? In other words, as we work through this grant, what are we going to have to tell them? What do they expect to see?
It's a twenty-seven-page application that I've been working on for about the last two weeks, just because I can't wait until the night before.
Sure.
Pretty. You know, there's some frustration on my part. We've, we've submitted the last three years' worth of data, both in budget form and in call volume form. The frustration I have sometimes is I see Wichita, I see Kansas City, I see metro departments getting these safer grants that have hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty-five people on duty a day, getting them repeatedly, year after year.
Yeah.
And the only reason I say that is because it's frustrating, because the intent of this program was for mid-sized departments like ours to benefit from just four additional people. Wouldn't make a big difference. So it, it's a very intensive, competitive. I don't know if you read the, the frequently asked questions. There's three hundred and sixty million dollars available. Ten percent will go to volunteer departments. They expect an awards of about three hundred awards.
Okay. So have you talked to any of the departments who've got it? And I know smaller departments, Andover, I believe, has had it. Great Bend has had one or two. What's their experience been?
Jealousy because of a hundred percent cost. They, they had to pony up some money. And this is the first time I've ever seen this.
But, but I'm, I guess the question is, have they achieved their objectives?
Yeah.
And I guess the question is, were their objectives to reduce overtime? Because?
Or growth. In Andover's case, it was growth. They were growing so, so they just couldn't keep up with the, the residential growth that they're seeing.
And we're going to look at this as a pilot project. The, the report says it could be. You know, that leaves me wondering, is it or is it not?
I, I was tasked to look for alternatives to decrease my overtime, and I found this one.
Okay. Oh, and what do we expect to see? I mean, what's the over, what is the targeted overtime at now, and where would we expect it to go? Because we're going to spend three hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm just wondering what the offsetting savings might be.
Right.
Well, and I know they're not going to be three hundred thousand, don't get me wrong. But I, I would like to know, you know, if it's ten thousand, that's very different than if it's a hundred and fifty.
Sure. The numbers I presented in the blue sheet show you our daily assigned personnel as of today. Two shifts have twenty-eight personnel, and one shift has twenty-seven.
Right.
If awarded, I wanted to get twenty-nine across the board on all three grants, for all three shifts. And the reason for that was we can drop down to twenty-five and still operate every piece of equipment we have. Our current allocation is two people off on scheduled leave per day. Personal days, vacation. That gives us a two-person buffer right off the bat. During the COVID situation, we actually dropped our daily minimum staffing down by one to assist in some overtime savings, which, which were effective. The point is, it gives the battalion chiefs and the department a lot of flexibility for the staffing model that they can resume. And then hopefully, with two people off, we have two people as a buffer. We don't have to call two people back to maybe take a transfer or call two people back to fill in, right? As, as of right now, I have three people on long-term injury leave.
So how much of that overtime budget, and I believe it's at about six hundred thousand for this year, how much of that overtime budget goes for that sort of overtime as opposed to the regularly scheduled overtime that just comes in as a part of the regular schedule?
I don't know. Debbie can answer that or not with, we got FLSA issues in that.
Well, I suspect, just looking at the history and the changes in the numbers from last year to this year, that we're talking about a target on the order of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. So, you know, that's, you know, a hundred and fifty is half of what we're spending. So I, you know, I, I have to question if the return there is worth it. And I would still like to get to the point, if we approve this, to make it conditional on that we get something back before we accept the grant that talks about, you know, at the end of six months, the end of the first year, second year, third year, that we see a certain amount of return, whether that be, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred thousand. We need to, we need to determine upfront, I think, what success looks like.
And, and I think we could get those metrics. Some of the difficulty we have is when a twenty-five-year captain takes overtime shift, his overtime's going to be more than a brand-new guy at fourteen dollars an hour. He's making twenty-seven. So to start slicing it that thin and trying to find out where our overtime, it, it can be difficult.
But, but historically, that, that standard overtime has, has been probably on the order of about a hundred and fifty, just looking at the budgeted amounts.
I would agree with that.
You know, so where, you know, we have, I get this will improve our efficiency, and it certainly gives us some space when people are not there. In other words, you can continue to staff all of your equipment and so on. But I just want to make sure we know what it's costing us going in, and it will cost us eventually. In three years, this goes on the tax bill, you know?
Yes.
That's what it boils down to. Or it comes from somewhere else. And, and we have enough of those decisions the way it is. So I, I, you know, I, I just think we owe it to ourselves to have our expectations out in the open upfront.
I, I will say this. I've, I've reviewed several of the Safer Grants, and most of them are for when a city decides to open a new station for those personnel. And looking back on what we did in 2013 by not adding any people, literally getting by, and due to the fact, at the time, that was the right decision, because we added the fourth ambulance, we added service level. But I wasn't here for those discussions. My understanding was the possibility existed that those positions would eventually, through the, get back, work their way back into the, the budget, and they haven't yet.
I know one of our long-term needs for the department is to do something about Station Four. And if, if we did this sort of staffing adjustment, would that ease that transition any? Because I'm, I don't know, but I'm, I'm surmising that when we do that, when and if we do that, I guess I ought to say it that way, that that will change staffing requirements also.
It, it, it will help. It will help. And I will say this, but when this Safer Grant first started, the first history of it, the first two years, you, new stations were eligible for it.
Yeah.
And they saw right away that, no, this is more for staffing people than, so therefore, a new station would.
And, and I know one of the reasons that they reduced the, or took away the co-pay, the match, is because they were trying to deal with departments who laid firefighters off to deal with COVID. And we fortunately were not in a situation that we had to do that.
Right. And, and a lot of the history from the Safer Grants were, the addition of, of hiring firefighters were for those only reasons, those were the only allowable reasons were for possible layoffs or retention of, of volunteer services. This is one of the first years they've allowed to, to other departments to add people.
Yeah. You may gather, I struggle with this, because I, I, I see it as a, as a staffing increase outside of the normal budget cycle. And I just want to make sure that we understand upfront what the expectations are. So when we get three years down the road, whoever's sitting at this dais has some basis for, you know, making a decision instead of just waiting until then and say, well, that worked or it didn't work. I just think we ought to establish some sort of metric that we can monitor and see if, if it is working.
And to your point, Commissioner France, one of the things we discussed was making sure that we don't expand our offerings or expand our expectations to where we find ourselves at the end of that grant cycle.
Yeah. Where, where, where the situation is, oh, we have to have these people now because?
And so it, it may be a tough decision at that point that we go back to 2020 levels and we're back to overtime levels like we're at right now. But it's an opportunity to quantify what, you know, service gains, coverage gains, and, and the costs that went along with that compared to the overtime savings.
I, I think one of the things that resonates with me, and it, it didn't occur to me until we're sitting here talking, is the whole idea that we need to, at some point, we need to talk about Station Four seriously. And if this helps with that transition, then I am probably, you know, it, it concerns me less than it would be if that was not on the horizon. And I know it's not in the plan now, but, you know, it's something we're going to have to do at some point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hoppick here. I think a couple of my questions were asked as far as we're currently fully staffed. And another question I had was about the EMS versus firefighters. I know that's a high percentage of overtime. This calculates out to about two hundred and eighty-one thousand a year. And kind of like Commissioner France said, if we continue this on, is that in the two hundred and eighty-one, or is this full amount that we're receiving on this grant? Does that take care of benefits and everything?
Yes. It's, it came to like seventy-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-four.
That's the total package.
And that's as a, that's a twenty-twenty numbers from human resources.
The, the grant, is it a all or none? I mean, would they, would there be a potential they'd come back and offer to fund two firefighters instead of four? Or is it's all or none?
Yeah. You submit, and you're either awarded or you're not.
Okay, that, because I didn't know if just two would be even beneficial. And I think from listening to a couple of the questions that Commissioner France had, I think we have to take into consideration the service to the public, the morale of the current staff, and then the cost moving forward. And I know that you said it's kind of hard to break down that overtime, and it sounds like two thousand and nineteen had overtime, should have been considerably more than twenty-twenty because of the individuals in training. One of the things I would like to see is that we somehow annually get some type of report that even though I know it's not going to be a hundred percent accurate, but can kind of give us a feel for, for what we are saving. So when we get to the end of that three-year period, we know that even though we're not recouping all that cost from the saving overtime, it may be beneficial enough to go ahead and, and move on and, and keep those additional four firefighters in, in place, so.
Right.
If, if I could chime in on that, something I think that would be very helpful is if we, you know, we pay this sort of scheduled overtime just by virtue of the way the department shifts and the interface with the, you know, Department of Labor regulations. Firefighters get, I don't know, fourteen hours or something like that of overtime every couple of weeks, just because of the way the shifting works. And it would be nice if we could distinguish that, which was, is just kind of a part of our basic operation, from overtime that results from, you know, people being sick or on vacation or off on injury leave or call volumes or whatever. That, that to me strikes me as a fairly important distinction in terms of managing the department.
And, and since I've been here, that's never been differentiated. That's never been.
It never has since I've been here either, chief. So, so you know, it's, you know.
I, I'm sure there's a way to do it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not. And Commissioner Hoppick, to go back to yours, keep in mind, eighteen and nineteen had merit increases too. So that, you got, that's going to start. Last year did not, but still, it's five, five and a half percent versus two percent.
Yeah.
Those happened, which.
And with respect to, with respect to the overtime number, there's, I think, an accounting change from nineteen nineteen to twenty, nineteen nineteen, twenty nineteen, or twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, I guess.
Correct.
And, and that makes that overtime number look like it has just ballooned, and it probably has not in reality.
Yeah, that's correct. Previously, the one of the one and a half got attributed to payroll, and the half got attributed to overtime.
Yeah.
We've made the decision from an accounting standpoint to fully report the overtime with the intention of getting a better sense of schedule issues and callback, what, what that was, to quantify that. So part of that increase from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty is just from that change in accounting.
Maybe it would be, if we looked at it just in terms of raw numbers, of, you know, we had X amount of, of hours of overtime in twenty eighteen, X in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and tried to separate it maybe a little bit from the, the actual value. We could at least, you know, as, I can't remember if it's Commissioner France or Commissioner Hoppick mentioned, differentiate, differentiate between what's always going to be our baseline of overtime hours versus the more optional ones that we have a possibility to, to reduce or to affect by, you know, with this grant with, for additional, with additional staffing.
And, and that's how I track my overtime, is by hours, due to the fact of the twenty-five-year captain versus.
Right, right.
And I, I will say this as an example, when we had the three people in paramedic class, the class time is fourteen hundred hours, that active time, that's in classroom time. It had to been, it had to be, had to have been covered by, by us while that employee was there. Then they do a field internship of four hundred and eighty hours out in the field. The, 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 the students do do their clinicals on their off-duty days, up to four hundred dollars, or up to four hundred hours. And they're, you know, not compensated for that, and that's kind of their, their skin in the game, so to speak. However, when the students are in, in that class, we, we do have to cover for them. And, and that year just was a lot.
Yeah.
And we had how many people? We had three people in that class.
I, I would hope that the mechanics of this will work, even though we're not allowed to pay paramedics out of this grant. In other words, they, they have to be assigned to a firing unit, fifty-one percent. I would hope that somehow there's some sort of synergy between the fact that we have a shared department, that you can help cover some of the absences for, you know, medics having to be gone on transfers or, or whatever, and that you can limit your, your callback for coverage, even though these particular people may not be assigned to that, if, if you get my drift.
Absolutely. That was the intent.
There, there are several ways to do that. And hopefully, then that would increase the impact, I think, fairly substantially.
Mayor Hodges had mentioned too, and I think Commissioner Hoppick did too, that creeping up the injuries is, is catching my eye a lot. I mean, we're, we're, I'm not saying that's totally, but there's several studies done that manpower on the fire scene, the more people you have there, the less work is involved across the board.
And I'm repeating myself, but I think Commissioner France, you're correct. There's an opportunity to kind of have an offset there. The conversation we had is that this doesn't create an opportunity for expanded transfer capacity, which is a whole nother challenging conversation that we need to have.
You know, I used to have a boss who told me work will expand to fill the time available. So, I mean, we're going to have to be watchful of that.
Correct. Just to mention the fiscal note, there is a, a, a department would be responsible for the protective equipment, the, the fire gear, which we budget for that anyway for, for new hires, of ninety-two hundred dollars.
Any other questions from the commission before we open it up for any public comment or questions?
No.
Are there any members of the public that have questions or would like to comment on this issue?
I don't see it at this time.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Commissioner Davis, I move we approve the submission of the Federal Emergency Management.
Federal Emergency Management Agency application for a fiscal year twenty twenty staffing for an adequate fire and emergency response grant.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Commissioner Franz here, are, would you be willing to condition that, that we have a follow-up discussion within, say, a month to, to set some expectations as to what we expect to see if this is successful? In terms of hours of overtime reduced or something like that?
Would a month be time enough, because the grant proposal, the grant wouldn't be awarded for a couple of months?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's usually about a sixty-day turnaround.
Right.
And it's, uh, due March twelfth, Friday.
Yeah, and I'm not saying before we submit it, I'm just saying before we care back so we know what conditions of the acceptance might be.
Well, we, it, I, my impression is we'll be working through, this is going to be a fluid planning, at least for the first six months. Just having the, the warm bodies available would be required first before you deploy them and, and use them and training. I just think there's a lot of moving parts, certainly, I, I was going to say maybe six months in, but.
Six months be.
Well, the problem is by that time, we will have already accepted the grant. I think we need to have some sort of metrics before we accept the grant so that we can tell FEMA, yes, thank you, no thanks very much.
And that, that does happen, there, there are departments that are awarded and then when it comes time to accepting, that they, they do deny it.
Well, that's why I asked early on, what happens if, if, you know, we didn't reach whatever goals we had, what happens to those positions? But if, if it's reasonable that those positions would be absorbed into our, our force anyway, at most, it's a year, I would imagine, of carrying the.
This is Mike Scragg, if it helps, I think there may be two questions here. One is an agreement on kind of our, our metrics and what we think our goal is before we accept the grant. And then after we've accepted the grant, we're going to need to continue to monitor, see what our performance looks like at, at grant end and then see if we want to continue that at our own expense. So I think what Commissioner Franz is saying is that, that sixty-day conversation or, or a month conversation would be fleshing out the metric details before we accept the grant. And then to your point, Commissioner Davis, we would continue to monitor and make a decision at the end of the grant cycle, whether we want to continue at our own expense.
All right, at the, at that as an amendment or an amended motion?
That, that is my request, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll go with that. Second agrees.
Second agrees.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And I'll see if, if, if this language satisfies everyone to submit an application for the safer grant conditioned upon having a discussion within the next sixty days? Was that, was that?
Before grant acceptance.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that, and that's going to be about sixty days according to chief, so.
Okay, okay, sixty days or upon grant acceptance to establish metrics that we expect to achieve from this grant as well as ongoing monitoring of the grant's impact on our fire department overtime in general.
Sounds good.
Is that okay? All right, we'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Franz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppek.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, motion passes five zero. We don't have any development business, that takes us to other business. And I would just like to offer congratulations to, to our new Public Works Director, Jim Toich. I see that he, oh, there he is, there he is in the, in his virtual splendor, congratulations. Jim, we're awfully excited to have you in your new role as Public Works Director and we wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
All right, and that's, that's all I had for other businesses, is there anything?
I, I, I do have one comment that, and it's, I don't know if it's a comment or a suggestion or a question, but I've seen some stuff material relating to the baseball proposal that we have on the table in terms of when we're going to proceed and the narrative seems to be that we have kind of set it aside and abandoned it and, and that's simply not the case. But the funding source did dry up and more or less go away for a time period and so we've deferred that, that decision. And I'm, I'm just going to put it out for the other commissioners to consider for, not necessarily today, but if it would, if there's any desire to move forward with the transient guest tax legislation, get it in place so that when we do decide to proceed, we can proceed with, with some degree of efficiency. And of course, the idea would be not to proceed until there's enough cash flow in that source to support the project. But in the meantime, we can accumulate resources to apply to the project when we do proceed. That should give some assurance to the folks who are, I think they're just a little bit nervous about the reality of our intention to proceed with that project and I think that would send a message that we are serious about it. About proceeding when, you know, the, the funding flow reestablishes itself.
Commissioner Franz, I, I was going to ask for the very same thing, not going in quite as much detail as you did, but request of the mayor that we schedule a conversation about that transient guest tax for very same reasons you've been, you're saying to us now. So I think time is now to have that conversation, it'd be appropriate to calendar in the near future so we can have it out there on the agenda for the community to comment.
All right.
Good point.
Any, can I get some input from Commissioner Davis and Commissioner?
Yep. I'd agree.
I, yeah, you also.
Okay, all right, well, I'll get with City Manager Mike Scragg and we will see when we can get that on the agenda for discussion. And just to be clear, we're talking about taking, we would be talking about the mechanism, how we're going to change the transient guest tax rate and get that legislation in position and, and ready to be used whenever we get to the point where that revenue source recovers, am I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that.
And Mayor, I think it'd be useful if staff could give us maybe some numbers on the, you know, what that change might need to be in order to satisfy the, or work with the proposals we're hearing from the development group.
Mayor Hodges, my intention would be to, to put the, the tax in place, get all the legislation done, make it effective, start the cash flow and then we're ready to proceed whenever the cash flow reaches a point where we think it is feasible to cover the cost of the project.
Okay, sounds good, I just wanted to be clear on, you know, expectations and what exactly we were looking at, discussing and possibly taking action on so that we're all on the same page, thank you for the clarifications, I appreciate that.
Mayor, in fact, one last, we spoke about it briefly at the beginning of the meeting before the meeting was officially started. But I want to compliment Salina Media Connection for the, and Deputy Manager Wood for his hours of testing. This has been a dream to work with and it looked really good from the user position, fifteen hundred miles away. So it's, it's job well done.
I, I agree, as the other Zoom participant, I just want to say, even from across town, just across town, it's, it's been great. So thank you to Salina Media Connection and to Mr. Wood for making this happen.
I just, this is Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood, just want to say, it, it's really the IT staffs of both the city and the county that have done this. I just tested, so they, they did a great job getting it all together, so I, I don't want to take any of the credit from those guys, they did a great job.
Well, you did a great job troubleshooting and testing, so thank you. And is there anything else? And if not, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hoppek, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I think we can do that one without a roll call, thank you very much and we'll see you.